We can't see the heads in council. It is one of the three significant. And it is. Council on election has respects to the test by the British community as the traditional and regional partners and continuing casting this is a mission. Of course, it is the tendency to advise that it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting is also being live streamed by a council's YouTube channel. Item one is apologies, and we have a good complement of customers, so they're a lot of apologies. Item two is declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest on any item on the open part of this agenda? Please.
Do you have that in mind?
Councilor Alexia.
Item four point one.
And any other declarations of interest in the general agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Item four point one. For the reasons that I am employed in the real estate industry, I'm not known to the proponents, nor have I ever had any dealings with the opponent. I will not be leaving the room.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilor Alexia, can I just confirm that you will be leading the debate?
Yes, madam. I will.
Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest? On the item, item three point one is confirmation of minutes. Can I have a reminder of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councilor Holster, thank you. Second up.
Happy to second.
Councilor Lachlan, thank you. Any comments, Councilor Holster?
That's all in the report. Nothing further.
Councilor Lachlan.
Nothing to add.
Any comments, questions? Councilor Holster to close.
Consider closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, with please say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready against. Motion is carried in and missing. Item three point two is public question time, and item three point two point one is responses to questions raised at prior meetings, and we have a recommendation there on page six. Do I have a move, please?
I will.
Councilor Holster, thank you. The second one?
I think it's second.
Councilor Lachlan, thank you. Councilor Holster, any comments?
That's all in the report. Nothing further.
Thank you, Councilor Lachlan.
Nothing better.
Any comments, questions? Councilor Holster to close.
Consider closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, with please say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready against. Motion is carried in and missing. Item three point two point two is questions unnoticed from the public, and we have any questions unnoticed from the public at this meeting? Item three point two point three are questions in doubt noticed from the public, which is the opportunity of the members of the gallery to ask questions of council in relation to council matters or asking how they can get to your sector, start your address, and ask your questions, please.
Right. Trevor Smith, City of Lincoln Court, Devonport. Before submitting my questions, could I have written replies to my questions rather than having verbal answers only? I wish to submit this question. Could you provide me a list from your database where there are footpaths in Devonport municipality that have no other footpath on one side of the street and have been waiting from eight years and past forty-six years to have the footpath constructed? Where there are gaps in footpaths on one side of the street that need constructing? Originally as October twenty twenty-one advertised for the Paranormal Arts Centre solar installation project. What is the cost of this project to the rapers of Devonport? Why wasn't it included in the initial construction phase when the renovations were taking place? Next one. When you be going to upgrade the faded zebra markings as well as the line markings through the vehicles at the four ways car park?
Thank you, Mr. Jenny.
Mr. Jenny. Thank you. My name's Douglas Jenny, twenty-three Watkinsun Street, Devonport. The re-sheerled part of Donrow last weekend had three manhole covers on the south lane, two of which at big depressions. The sequence of work does not agree with state growth standards, which I understand the council follows. The standard states where specified in clause four hundred and seven point twenty-four D, all manhole and valve covers shall be raised or lowered to the new surface level prior to Asheville work commencing. So the question is, when are the two depressions going to be removed by raising the manhole covers?
I'll take that unnoticed, Mr. Jenny.
Second question. The lighting at the intersection of Devonport and Stony Rose Roads at Spraton is not up to the standard of lighting at the roundabout at Watkinsun and Steel Streets. When will the lighting be improved at this intersection?
Again, Mr. Jenny, I'll take that unnoticed, thank you.
Question three. Where declarations of interest result in there not being a quorum of councillors? What is the procedure?
Mr. Jenny, we saw quite a bit of buzz on what?
I can answer that, may I, ma'am? I assume Mr. Jenny is referring to a council meeting.
Yes, any county's on meeting.
Personal meeting rates. If there's not a quorum of councillors, the item can't be considered and needs to be deferred to a later date. I will clarify, if you refer to an annual general meeting, that is a different requirement.
But okay, the particular item that comes up, the declaration of interest does not allow a quorum. So how can you defer it? Because the next time it comes up, you'll have the same problem.
Through that amendment, not necessarily. If a councillor was absent and then was able to attend when the matter was released, that may result in a glene coram. But it's clear in the meeting rates how we to deal with conflicts of interest in the quorums.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenny. Any other questions?
Madame Galloway, full blown my drive, my dinner. My question is directed to you, Mayor Rockliff. At the twenty twenty-one AGM, you determined from the chair that no speaker for the motion that council takes such action necessary for a sale of private all place could provide history on council's past management of this facility. And I quote your statements from the chair when I attempted to do so. Mr. Galloway, I won't allow if the motion is for the future of private all place, it's not related to the past. And in response to my query, so you're going to gag me? You said, I am. And also stated, the motion is about the future of private all places, not about the past. You may speak about the motion accordingly. And considering you were almost picking what I could and could not say line by line, will you now advise precisely on what grounds and authority you determined the past was not relevant to any efforts to convince those in attendance to vote for the motion to take such action necessary for a sale of private all place?
I'll take that unnoticed, Mr. Jenny. Do you have another question?
You were very quick to make the decision on the night. You don't remember why you did that?
I know why I did that. I don't need to explain myself to you. In my response, do you have another question?
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you. Considering you've taken my question one unnoticed, when on the night of the AGM you quickly acted so as to prevent any comments relating to council's embarrassing past management...
Again, Mr. Galloway, be very careful on your comments.
Okay. Embarrassing, past management performance in relation to private all place. Will you at least explain here and now why you need to take that question unnoticed when you should already know your reasons as chairperson for gagging that aspect of debate on the night?
I can say I don't know my reasons, Mr. Galloway. I said I will take it unnoticed. Thank you.
Okay.
Your third question?
Yes, Madam Chair. At the October ordinary meeting, councillor Perry stated that rent income of one point one million exceeded loan interest by two hundred thousand dollars. Accordingly, will council advise as to whether the rent income of one point one million dollars, as stated by councillor Perry, is gross rent or net rent after all operational costs have been accounted for?
Again, to ensure that we make sure that we get you the correct information that you are seeking, Mr. Galloway, I'll take it unnoticed.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Velocot. Mr. Velocot.
Thank you, Mayor Robert Velocot, Leaven Cocker Place, Devonport. Question, Mayor, during the two thousand and twenty-one annual general meeting, whilst my notice of motion about council providing free parking vouchers for ratepayers who had paid rates for more than fifty years were being dealt with, councillor Leon Perry asked me, Mr. Velocot, do you stand to derive a benefit from tonight if this motion is successful and subsequently successful? And then, Mayor, you said councillor Perry, I call you to order. Councillor Perry then asked directly to me, you don't have to declare an interest? Mayor, I now ask you, what was the reason you called councillor Perry to order?
Simply that I didn't feel the best and appropriate question to ask is, Mr. Velocot, did you want to move on?
It wasn't an appropriate question. Thank you. Question two, Mayor, for the record, would it be in order or appropriate for me to now answer councillor Perry's question?
If you would like to answer that question, I'll allow you room to do that, Mr. Velocot, but I will ask you to be brief.
Well, it's very, very brief. That being so, my answer is an emphatic no. I do not have to declare an interest. I might ask too, Mayor.
This is...
Did you call councillor Perry to order because he was in breach of council's code of conduct policy, part seven, one, A, B, and C?
I didn't call him to order because of that. I simply said I didn't think that that question is appropriate, and that's all I'm going to say on that, Mr. Velocot.
So, yeah, you don't consider that over contention? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Item one. We have, no, item three point three is questions unnoticed by councillors, and we don't have any of those at this point, and we don't have any items at three point four notices of motion. Item four is planning authority matters, and I announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under this Planning and Improvis Act of nineteen ninety-three for the consideration of a general item four point one. Council is required by regulation eight three of local government spending procedures to deal with items as a planning authority under the Luther nineteen ninety-three, this question matter. Following on this to be dealt with at this meeting in its capacity as a planning authority. Thank you, councillor Alexia, and... Item four point one is item eight two R two one, item one one three two, item three is this borrowed residential and sports recreation facility. There is a recommendation for... Do I have a move after the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councilor Holster, thank you. Do I have a second up?
I'll second it.
Councillor Perry, thank you. Councillor Holster?
Under our planning scheme, this fits criteria. There's been quite a bit of discussion as to whether plumbing issues, other planning issues that don't really come to this, this part of the planning application. And then we'll come, plumbing and so forth will come with the building early later on. So I can't see anything recent not to pass this at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Holster. Councillor Jenny.
I can't get any grainy. Yeah, that's kind of, yeah, thanks, ma'am. Yeah, look, it's been assessed, it's come back to us this particular application, modified, of course. It's been assessed against the relevant criteria. One of the issues raised, one of the prominent issues raised in the representations was that this has been applied for, yeah, one of the concerns was it could be used for visitor accommodation. Now, if that were the case, and it became, started to become used for visitor accommodation, they would need to get another planning and would need to apply for that visit accommodation. And, you know, I'd be pretty sure the scrutiny on the place will be, will be, will ensure that if that does happen, it will come to council, and council will act accordingly then. That was one of the key issues, but I think everything else has been covered off on, and I hope everyone supports it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Jarman, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Look, I certainly understand what this application is really aimed to do, and I have a couple of questions if I may through you, Madam Chair, perhaps two.
Not to the general age in the best instance.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Councillor Perry just mentioned that was modified. It came to us before in a different way, this application for that property is. I've got no problem with the equestrian facility and what they want to do. They're wonderful pools and a wonderful thing to do. That came to us, and we allowed the equestrian side of things to be modified and changed for an arena, I believe. But there was also something else.
The original application to the cause was withdrawn.
Okay, but it came to us in that, oh.
No, it wasn't considered, I guess.
Thank you. Okay. And so that was my impression, sorry. And then it's come to us in this modified form, as councillor Perry has said, and we now have a residence of six bedrooms, which seems to me to be a lot of bedrooms if you're not going to be having it as a facility used for seasonal workers or the like. And we've got, the recreation use is meant to be fifty car park spaces, but we're allowing nine. I certainly have questions to ask in relation to, five is for the residents, even though that there's six bedrooms, there could be perhaps more cars needed to be there for, just for the recreation use for the equestrian facility. And yes, I understand the horses are already there, they live there, but you do need a horse trailer to get your horses from that place.
Can you be a bit specific in that?
Yeah, I'm getting to that. I just, I'm talking about the car park spaces at the moment there. You'd have a horse box that would need to get animals to and from to say the vet, or if they're going to anywhere for any other reason. So what happens for those extra requirements that would be needed, no matter what, if you do have horses there?
Mr. Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Ma'am, thanks for your question. I guess in the application, the actual applicant, they've stated that the horses, there'll be no additional horses coming, I guess exterior to the site. And therefore, there is no further requirement for any, I guess we didn't need to take into account additional sort of trailer parking or anything like that for the horse box.
No, so I think that that's missing there, so that, thank you. I appreciate that. The other question is obviously, we do know that there's water issues down in that area. It's a flood, flood area, and we've certainly got concerns about that's got to go to the next stage, and we looked at. And the other concerns that we were looking at was if we allow six, a six bedroom residence to be used, to be built there, again, it goes forward, then there's a permit that comes to us at the latest stage, it could be a completely different council that's looking at it. It could be completely different people that are making those decisions. I just have my concerns about not making that decision here and now and trying to make sure that we know what the resident is going to be using the place for and to make sure it's being used for the right reasons. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I probably have a different view to councillor Jarman in relation to, I think councils run a very, you know, strong voice.
Wait a minute, can I just ask, are you allowed to speak if you declared an interest?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
My advice that I wasn't leaving the room. I declared an interest because I'm involved in real estate industry, which I have enough.
And you are, that's...
So, you know, I think that we need to be very careful in relation to local governments dictating to, you know, the free market in relation to what they want to build and what they don't want to build and who can live there and who can't live there. I think there are no real risk of doing that. The systems and the processes and the guidelines and the criteria that we have to comply with are outlined in the planning scheme. This application has met those. In relation to progressing this any further, there will be another set of criteria that we'll have to comply with, which is another set of hoops that's got to go through. But I think just because someone's building a six bedroom house is irrelevant, you know, what if I want to build a ten bedroom house? Because I want to. I don't think we can take that away from people. I don't think that's, if the, if the, if they meet the criteria and the scheme says they can, we can't really vote against it because subjectively we don't like it. I think we've got to look at this objectively, and that's how it should be considered and how it's been assessed has been objectively. In relation to this, the Mounties' response, where the opponent hasn't necessarily conveyed to us that they don't intend to transport horses in and out every day, so therefore the requirement for them to have horse flow movements in that particular precinct is no different to, you know, the farmer that lives a little bit further up the road in relation to bringing stock to the, to the port, because that is the access road that he would use. So I think, you know, livestock movements in a rural area are to be expected, and I regard horses as livestock. So I think that's, that also is a good point. But I think, again, council would run a very high risk of not supporting this application that have been challenged and then coming at great expense to the rapers in defending something because, you know, we don't like it when the advice says it complies with or meets the criteria. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other comments? From the council, I'll ask, councilor, has to propose to that?
This has actually come to council many times over the years. Probably now I can rescreen and set up a couple of there. Gallery members will know, they haven't been here long enough. But obviously now that's come to council, they've met the criteria, they know for a paying application, so there's no reason for it not to get across. Thank you.
Thank you. Item four point one, is the endorsement of leadership of council committees. We have a recommendation on item four to drive you.
So moved.
Thank you, councillor Perry, second up.
Happy to second that, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Lachlan. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, the representation for these two committees came to us at the workshop, and we spoke about them and endorsed the names of those particular committees and also the councils that will join those particular committees, since it's endorsing what we've already discussed. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lachlan.
Thank you, ma'am. It's very pleasing to see that the people that did apply to go onto these committees are very well credentialed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a comment, I'm quite looking forward to being on the Public Art Committee. I'm broadening my horizons and seeing what we can actually look, you know, what I can learn from very experienced people who have nominated for those positions.
Robert, you sticking outside the comments, I mean. Any other comments, councillor Holster?
Yes. I've been involved with the art gallery for quite some time, and my only concern was that the professional artists on the committees were actually on the art gallery running, and I felt that the professional artists should be on the public art committee, which they have, so I'm quite pleased with the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Perry, close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with councillor Murphy, I'm sure this will cultivate you in another direction. Congratulations for, for winning that spot and to the other four, three councillors as well, so I'll consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, with please say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready against. Motion is carried in and missing. Item five point two is the fifty plus year rate per parking concession. There is a recommendation on how to... Do I have a move, please? Any other comments, councillor Holster?
Yes. I've been involved with the art gallery for quite some time, and my only concern was that the professional artists on the committees were actually on the art gallery running, and I felt that the professional artists should be on the public art committee, which they have, so I'm quite pleased with the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Perry, close.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I agree with councillor Murphy, I'm sure this will cultivate you in another direction. Congratulations for, for winning that spot and to the other four, three councillors as well, so I'll consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, with please say aye.
Aye.
I'm ready against. Motion is carried in and missing. Item five point two is the fifty plus year rate per parking concession. There is a recommendation on how to... Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Can I second that?
Happy to second.
Thank you, councillor Alexia. Councillor...
Thank you, ma'am. Obviously, this was brought to us at the AGM, and as part of that process, it now comes here for debate, and on the other recommendations there, it's pretty clear that no three motions were passed at council's annual general meeting relating to the inclusion of the ratepayers fifty plus years. But I think there's still a little bit more work to do on this. So I think if we look at the recommendation there, having considered the motions and reconsidered advice previously provided, not to make any changes to the current arrangements, having said that, there is nothing to stop us in the future, so actually bringing this back to the workshop. But at this point in time, that is the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia, second up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with councillor Murphy there, there's a bit of too much authority with this, with this one here. Let's see the benefit, and obviously, if we look at it further, our team will look a bit closer, I think. Happy.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Holster?
Yes, I believe we need to look into this further in the future. I believe with some pensioner concessions, there is some discrimination between some varieties of pensioners, I think this needs to be looked at, to the extent that some of the state government requires.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Three, a couple of speakers, I think even the move of the motion said that you perhaps should look at this further, but not for now. I've actually got an alternate recommendation. I'm not sure how I could, how I could progress that, whether it be an amendment to this particular motion, or I read it out in the move and the second, and they accept it?
Would you like to read it and accept it?
I read it out, okay. Point one is as is, on, in that... Point one is as is in that recommendation. Point two would be convene a workshop to discuss consideration being given to a twelve month trial period for the concession sort. Point three, noting the inability to verify fifty years of paying rates. That any policy developed for this concession requires the applicant to demonstrate eligibility. And number four, a further report on the matter to be presented to council following that workshop.
So that's, and.
I'll speak to it if no one agrees.
This first question is whether councillor, councillor Alexia, the move is second, is good to. Okay. In that case, I'll make it.
Yeah, my advice, ma'am, would probably be a foreshadowed motion. Because it is contrary to the recommendation here, basically saying not to.
Yeah, not to change.
Neither the speakers have spoken of the desire to do that. That motion is contrary. So my advice, ma'am, we put that in with councillor Perry, foreshadows.
Then I'll have a second.
Yes.
Okay. All right. In that case, the foreshadow.
I'll foreshadow that motion.
I'll leave the most promotion as it stands. And which has, has there anyone else who wants to speak to the motion as it sits at this point? Councillor Jarman?
Yeah, my concern is this comes up and I wonder why we bother having an AGM and how democracy works. Last year at the AGM, it was thirty nine to three that the people in the room, including the councillors in the room at the time, voted, it got through, it came to council, it got knocked back. I think it was seven to two. It comes back to council again at the AGM. The councillors are in the room, we vote, we all get our chance to vote. It still has to come back to this situation, which I'm not sure why, but it does. That's how it works. And we get the chance to knock it back again. I just don't believe in why we bother having an AGM and allowing people to watch those motions. And we get the democratic vote. We get people where it gets carried, it gets passed, and it gets back to here and it just about gets knocked on its feet again. So I'm really pleased that councillor Perry has brought that up. Because it allows us to work with it and to understand that that's what the people have said. And it was passed. And it yet, it still has to come back to this level. I'm not sure why it happens that way. That's just how it is. So I certainly don't agree with this resolution. And I certainly am happy to work with councillor Perry. So thank you.
Thank you. I guess the other comment I would make on that comment is that that's the local government also. We work with it and we generate emotions come to the council as the deciding body. And that's what we're doing. Are there any other comments on the motion?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think councillor Jarman's highlighted another issue for the Department of City Council, obviously to take to the look at conference. Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Are there any against? Over the last special hands, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Milburn, councillor Lockwood, those against the motion? Councillor Murphy, councillor Holster, councillor Lachlan, councillor Alexia, councillor Ennis, councillor Jarman, councillor Perry. The motion is lost. Councillor Perry.
Yeah, I'll foreshadow, I'll foreshadow that motion. Would you like me to read it again? With that recommendation, I'll foreshadow, I'll move. I actually handed it to, had my guy up on the board, perhaps.
Have you been, councillor Perry?
Uh, yep.
Councillor Perry's going to be foreshadowing the motion.
I'll have a second.
Councillor Jarman, second to that. Councillor Perry, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thanks, ma'am. Well, we know that the history of this is it's been brought up a couple of times at our last two AGMs. And, you know, I think maybe it's time that we try to come up with some sort of resolution in that we give it a try. See how effective it is for our fifty plus year rate payers and see if council can manage to manage the concession without it becoming too onerous or for whatever other reasons we've had in the past to not proceed with it. One of the reasons was that I don't agree is that if we apply a concession to this cohort, then other cohorts may wish to come forward. But I think this, I think this, a fifty year plus rate payer, I think this is in recognition of their longstanding, I guess, service, if you like, or their longstanding, longstanding living in our community. They obviously pay rates for fifty years. And I think if we, if we have that criteria, noting number three, that they have to demonstrate that they have been a rate payer for fifty years, whether it be fifty years in succession or fifty accumulative years. If they can demonstrate that, then in all fairness, I think we should provide them with the same concession that we currently have for the concessions, noting that we have the most generous concession, pension concession and other cohorts in that age group in the state. But I think this adds another level. I think it satisfies, well, certainly will for twelve months if it works. I think it satisfies the intention of what we've discussed at the last two annual general meetings. And I think it's probably time that we've reached a point where we give it a try. And see if we can make it work. And hopefully we don't have to deal with it again. And that everyone is satisfied with what we've resolved and so are the rate payers. I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman, second one.
Thank you. Congratulations, councillor Perry, on this. I certainly think that this is something that we can work with. We just need to start to listen to the people and understand that sometimes we just need to say thank you to people out there for what they've been doing in the community for us. We had a rate payers luncheon. It's wonderful. It's a really lovely feeling and atmosphere in the room when we do that. We don't ask people to give us a cheque and balances. They walk in the room if they want, are eligible to have the luncheon. And we can do that though. It's a way, people, if they really want to have this concession, they can come and prove it. I'm sure there's a way. And without it being too costly to council to modify or to work, monitor. And I really do believe we used to actually have something similar when I first got on council. It was going to be taken away. I voted against it at the time. It was taken away. And I think that was a tragedy at the time. So I'm really happy that we're going to get to this point where we're actually going to listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillor Milburn?
I have a question, possibly for the speaker and second one. So if I was to buy ten properties and pay rates for five years on those ten properties, am I then eligible?
No.
But I pay just as much in rates as what the fifty plus years rate payers will pay. So if you're talking about fair and equity, then I should also get a concession.
You all disagree.
So I believe that it's not fair and equitable. We do things to celebrate people that leave here for quite some time by having a dinner and/or a luncheon. And there are a lot of questions like that to why it would be fair and equitable. And for that reason and all the other reasons that have been said in the motion before this. I believe that this is just going around in circles and that we need to nut it on the head.
Thank you, councillor Milburn. Any other speakers, councillor Holster?
Yes, going back to the AGM. The majority of rate payers could pass a motion for council to spend ten million dollars or something for the annual term. So naturally, it's got to come back to council. Otherwise, we'd be spending ten million on whatever the rate payers wanted to. We had a lovely increase in rates for something like that.
Thank you, councillor Holster. Councillor.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree with the sentiments of councillor Holster in relation to the AGM. Is the absolute opportunity for rate payers to come along to a meeting. But we also have a responsibility to ensure that any of those motions that are put are backed up with the necessary information, evidence and support via a report process for council to make an informed decision. I think this is a good alternative. I wholeheartedly support councillor Jarman's support from councillor Perry in bringing this to the table for obviously ongoing conversation. I think, you know, going back to councillor Milburn's point about whether I've got five properties or ten properties or fifty properties. I believe I agree with councillor Perry that it's irrelevant. The simple fact being, the community has come to two AGMs and has put on the table that rate payers who have continuously paid rates for fifty plus years, as councillor Perry put it, as a reward for service to the community over a long period of time. And service to community can be varying things. But I think realistically, it's only probably going to apply to a handful of people anyway. Because we currently, a lot of those rate payers that are in that category are currently offered the pensioner and aged disability concessions anyway. So it's only a small cohort that it will probably apply to. And I know Mr. Jayney has been a long advocate, along with Mr. Bellicott, in seeking that level of acclamation, if you like, or reward for those rate payers who have been in the community for that period of time. So I think it's definitely worth going through, giving it a trial period and putting the onus back on to the rate payers to actually demonstrate that. Because it was a very difficult task for the council to actually go ahead and actually obtain that information. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Just to clarify, this is the motion for a workshop to consider. It's not going to make that decision. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. I'm going to support the motion. I think I like the spirit of it in the fact that we will consider rewarding people's loyalty to the city. And I think if they're going to be here and enjoy the fifty years over time in our city, we should, we should recognise that. And I appreciate the efforts of all those people that managed to live for fifty years and pay rates in this city.
Thank you. Councillor Lachlan?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I am going to vote for the shadow motion. And I know we will discuss it, but what we'll have to look at in that, within that discussion, of course, is offering car parking as well as the lunch. I mean, it's going to make a hole in the budget. And I think that what's been said earlier about, you know, looking after our rate payers. I think with what we've done with the luncheon, we're already mindful that they've been paying rates for fifty years. So that will come into the discussion at the workshop that I just wanted to mention. So we start thinking about is it one or the other or both. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Alexia?
Thanks, madam mayor. Congratulations to councillor Perry for coming up with this motion in. Obviously, I said before, it's, it's a lot of things here and there, a lot of ideas and suggestions come up. We want to make it as fair as possible for the rate payers that are in that category as well. I think once we look at it further, I think councillor Murphy raised it, said that there are very few. Probably a good point there, but nevertheless, we'll do our best. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jarman?
If I may ask a question, me through you to the general manager. If endorsing what councillor Holster just said about this is how it is, you know, people can come up with a ludicrous idea at the AGM and that way it comes back to us. I get that. As I said, I understand we had to do this. What happened to item seven point one at the AGM that was carried? Are we discussing that?
It's through you, ma'am. It's on the agenda under the next report.
Oh, it's involved within. I think, I just didn't know why it was coming up as a separate. Thank you.
Questions, Alex? The last answer, Perry, close.
Thanks, madam mayor. And thank you, everyone, for your comments. Just on councillor Milburn's comment, look, yeah, I understand what you're saying, but someone that's got ten properties, five years. But this is a recognition of longstanding residency, not a recognition of wealth. And, and, yeah, I think I can leave it at that. I just think we're being fair. We need, we need, we need to give this a try because it keeps coming back. And, you know, if after twelve months it doesn't work, then we reconsider it. But, you know, I think, I think for twelve months, we can probably get this right and we can install it forever and a day. And that's how it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. I will put the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against?
No.
Over the last special hands, those who have it, please raise your hand. Councillor Murphy, councillor Holster, councillor Lachlan, councillor Alexia, councillor Ennis, councillor Jarman, councillor Perry. Those against, councillor Milburn, councillor Offitby, motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you. Item five point three is new five states that play rapid pedestrian strategy for the two thousand sixteen to twenty one. Do I have to move?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, thank you. Second one.
Happy to second that, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Lachlan. Councillor Murphy.
Lady Mayor, very detailed report. Now, it does state in the recommendation, considering, having considered the motion passed at council's twenty twenty one annual general meeting regarding footpath funding, continue to consider future funding and project prioritisation by the established principles contained in the pedestrian strategy. And consider any additional footpath funding within the established frameworks as part of the annual budget deliberations. I think that meets the criteria of the intent or purpose of the notice of motion, which I supported on the night in relation to the potential for expanding some of our surplus. Not necessarily all of it, but we could probably contribute a percentage. And that'll be determined, obviously, when it comes around to budget deliberations. So it's very difficult to be able to meet all the demands of the community in relation to footpaths at a particular point in time when they see necessary. And we've seen that when we've gone through a process in relation to the application for footpath with rising revenue. So I think we continue to go through and the review of the strategy now well underway. And we'll see what that, the new review brings us.
Thank you. Councillor Lachlan?
Thank you, ma'am. It's good to see on page forty nine that we're moving ahead with eight more projects. I think that's quite heartening. And that means, of course, that we're updating our strategy, that we've got our eye on the ball. And we can only move forward with it. And it's good to see what is happening around our city with these pathways. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councillor Murphy, close.
Oh.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I thought you said. Sorry, ma'am.
Councillor Jarman?
Thank you. Yes, forgive me. I must have skinned. I have a question given to me from the public to ask in relation to this. So I wasn't concentrating on the actual recommendation itself. So forgive me about that. So I have two questions, if I may. One was about the actual block road. There's a warning sign up there, general manager, at the moment. So are we having problems with that access across the road from the footpath for the pedestrian strategy? Is that why we're having a warning sign being cut off?
Oh, it's just good.
Through you, ma'am. No problems per se, other than being a change. So quite a significant change in terms of the new infrastructure installed in the block precinct. And we are coming into the busy season. So we do give a good message, signboards for similar road safety awareness. Messages at times when they're available and they're not being used for project work. So just an opportunity to reinforce that change with the community.
No problem. I might get someone to actually talk to council about that then. Thank you. And forgive me because I didn't realise this was connected to until I just reread it. So thank you for pointing that out to council. So thank you for pointing that out to council. I'm asking. So my question would be, would we consider an amendment to actually be more concise and linear towards the actual notice of motion that was passed at the AGM? So that it was actually mentioned and a little bit more clear? It's a little bit vague for my liking, so I'm wondering if we could make an amendment to have a part C.
Do you want to remember the amendment?
Yes, if I may. I think it should actually have more mention of what this actual notice of motion said, which was passed at the AGM by the people. It was carried. It actually says here, it's about looking at for residents that have paid rates for 30 years or more that are asking for footpaths or that for some footpaths that have been consistently asked for by the public on a regular basis.
So your amendment is?
That as a part C. Because that's actually what the motion said.
Would you like to elaborate your...
Absolutely. Thank you. So for part C, just say, in particular, the areas where residents have paid rates. So it will just copy that last part, Jackie, for your benefit. In particular, in the areas where residents have paid rates for 40 years or more, also prioritising the streets where the residents and/or public have constantly requested that footpaths be provided. That's what it says.
Councillor Murphy has been through that.
How do you feel?
As the second one. Do you have a view on whether you want to add to your motion?
No.
No, you don't want to have it?
Correct.
Thank you. In that case, do you want to... Councillor Jarman wants to add a little bit.
Yeah, through you, May. Councillor Bell, the amendment, if you can just... Councillor slowly, so Jackie can just...
Absolutely.
So if you can just give us the wording?
Absolutely.
I'll be in. May just put the amendment. I'll get a second here.
Second, Mr Ennis, let me...
Absolutely. So part C would say, in particular, in the areas where residents have paid rates for 40 or more years, also prioritising the streets where the residents and/or public have constantly requested that footpaths be provided. Thank you.
I made a second there to see how many need to... Um, which has been... As soon as... And to try to figure that to... Motion is good. Councillor Murphy, councillor Lycott. Are there any other comments? Councillor Mill, last question. Right, thank you.
If I may, we call you in. Just because somebody's paying rates for 50 years, they could be in an area that that could be criteria for a footpath. And I think, well, basically, I like it as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor Jarman, did you have another question? I'll ask you, Paul, councillor Ennis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the way the recommendation is written goes to the intent of the motion that was put at the AGM. I made that pretty clear before. When I read that, having considered the motion passed at council's 2021 annual general meeting regarding footpath funding, continue to consider, to consider future funding and project prioritisation, which means it would encapsulate potentially that 40-plus rate year. But as councillor Hollister has so pointed out, that unfortunately, if someone's lived in a property for 40-plus years, doesn't necessarily provide them, then they go to the top of the rung. I think we have to be strategic and sometimes it does take a period of time. These things do take time. I know, I walk around our city. I do note when I walk down Nickel Street, which was a former street that I used to live in, and saw the intermittent footpath grass, footpath grass, and got to dodge the occasional sort of leftover from the dog, but that's just how it is. But what I've also noticed when I've been walking around town is slowly, those infill bits are actually being filled in. It just takes time. But I think that the recommendation is put here, that has been put tonight, and it says quite clearly, consider any additional footpath funding within the established framework, which is the criteria which we need to consider. So we can potentially take $200,000 out of our surplus during the budget deliberations and say, okay, well, that's what they said. That was the motion at the AGM. Well, where can we prioritise that? So we're actually complying with the intent of the motion. So consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against?
You.
Okay. I'll ask for sharp hands. Players who have a place raise their hand. Councillor Murphy, councillor Lycott, councillor Alexia, councillor Ennis, councillor Milburn, councillor Perry, councillor Rockford. Players against? Councillor Hollister and councillor Jarman, motion is carried. Item 5.4 is the different general section last to plan. Are you one of that? Do I have those in place? Some? Have a second there?
I'll check him.
It's been a lot of work done to the cemetery since my standing at home council, which is great to see. And I definitely applaud everyone's being involved, especially the community that's been working there. And it's good to see that it's been digitally upgraded as well, so people can search for relatives that are within that cemetery. So congratulations to everyone involved.
Thank you. Councillor Alexia?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's Oliver, the commentary, just made. I do note that the cemetery was open in 1922, so forward to the big celebrations next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Milburn, to pause. Consider it closed. I'll put the motion, all eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6 is in relation to 6.1, it's workshops and weekly sessions. So it's still asked, councillor Ennis? There is a... Relation there, do I have more in place?
So moved. Second.
Oh, here we go. Thanks, Mayor. Yes, all the area reports are very exciting times ahead and along, so bringing the information that's provided, some of those workshops that we attended.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
I'd give you a word, Mayor. Thank you. Pleasure to do that.
Are there any other comments or questions? Councillor Murphy, pause.
Consider it closed.
Excuse me? I'm a bit concerned.
Pass ways.
Yes, I noticed that the tourist train, it was discussed, I remember that. And unfortunately, that's not going ahead. We couldn't get it up. So despite being a good idea, there wasn't actually enough interest to make it happen. So maybe in the future, it may happen. So as the city develops, there'll be someone who'll come along and use that idea and it'll be fantastic, I reckon. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies, councillors. Councillor Mill, to pause.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, councillor Ennis. But it took my mind, actually, yeah, just a bit unfortunate, because I think with the right operator and the right plan, it could be something that we... I think COVID may have had an impact in relation to that. Obviously, it'd be very difficult in a particular point in time, knowing where things are going to be. So but as I said, exciting times ahead.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6.2 is the mayor's monthly report. Do I have any of that place?
So moved.
Councillor Hollister, councillor Milburn. Thank you, councillor Hollister.
Yes, it's got obviously to be as busy as usual. Nothing further, do I?
Thank you, councillor Mill. As he has always been, nothing better. Okay. Other comments, questions? Councillor Rockford?
Thank you, Mayor. It was nice that you were at Home Hill with us up there when we were able to show the Minister for Heritage, watch it edge through the property. It was lovely to see yet another politician. Blown away, I suppose is the word, on what a wonderful asset we have here in Devonport. The more people we can show, the more the good word will get out, especially a Minister for Heritage. So we'll keep that happening with politicians coming in and hope in the future that we're able to get some either state or federal funding to develop an interpretive centre out in the gardens to take a bit of the stress off Home Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. The cold climate classic that you officially launched, I assume that went well. It's just that COVID probably sabotaged the event a little bit in terms of people coming to the place. So hopefully next year, things will, when it's run again, people will be able to travel and get here and it'll be a really good event for our city.
Absolutely. And I'm sure our staff will be in and report back as far as just some of those sorts of things that are going into year on.
Yeah, Mayor, just in relation to the 2021 Children's University graduation, unfortunately, I got waled, I wasn't able to attend. But we had a good representation of students from Devonport who actually graduated on them.
They were all Devonport students.
And how many? That's fantastic. Great news. Well done.
Yeah, it's a lovely event and it's great for opening your eyes to what the future could hold for them. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll ask councillor Hollister to pause.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6.3 is the general manager's report for May 11. Do I have any of that place?
So moved.
I'll check him there.
Thank you, Mayor. Any deeps report as usual. We'd just like to ask a question through you to the general manager. I do see, Mayor, where you were part of the meeting with the Minister for Police. I'm just wondering if you're able to give us an update, Mr Atkins or Mayor, on what happened with the minister, Jackie Petrusna? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, May. Yes, so the mayor, the deputy mayor himself met with the minister and also the deputy premier came to that meeting. And I guess it was an opportunity for us to express council's desire to see the ambulance and fire station relocated. And I think it's fair to say they support the principle of that relocation. And then we talked about potential sites and opportunities, but also talking about some of the challenges, particularly in the notion of funding and the cost of any such move. The outcome of the meeting was that we would write to the government, formally requesting that they consider a couple of sites that we've identified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yeah, another good month for the general manager and I'm pleased to see that the Taz Water general meeting adopted the updates to the shareholder letter of expectation following a review by a dedicated working group over the last 12 months. And in particular, some more robust narrative around sanctative dividends for member councils. I think that was a real win for all councils, but I'm pleased that that actually occurred and realigned the ship a little bit, if you like. So well done on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in relation to the Le Gat special meeting, it was actually... And the proposed review of the local government. Taking into consideration, the minister's now outlined post-18-month review period. And I know this particular council has been proactive in engaging or going through the Cradle Coast Authority. Will that now form the sort of primary driver for the Cradle Coast Authority? And we have a timeline to actually put some things in place. So as the nine member councils can either work together or we can do it individually?
Certainly, as the board, certainly the intent of the board, that hopefully the councils, member councils will endorse the Cradle Coast being the driver for the conversations and discussions, so that the North West councils can have a...
Will that now become a priority for the Cradle Coast Authority in relation to, we now have a timeframe that we don't miss that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mister Hollister?
In relation to the meeting that the police and the ministers, was there any word on further development of Devonport's courthouse?
Councillor Lycott asked you to pause for today.
Consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6.4 is the executive business expense report to the 30th of October. Do I have any of this place?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Councillor Murphy, councillor Perry?
Thanks, Mayor. I've got notes from expenses still relating to the Le Gat Conference on the 1st of August, or very early in August. Did we become delinquent in that or we just weren't billed until, until later? This was almost four months ago.
I'm just trying to remember why.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Yes, some of those invoices were a little bit late, but fine.
Yeah.
And so we just present them on the report. In that regard, fine.
Thank you.
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As usual, councillor Perry's all over, so that's good.
Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6.5 is the annual plan progress report to 30th of October. Do I have any of that place?
So moved.
Councillor Perry and councillor Hollister, councillor Perry?
Look, a fair bit of reading there, but it's all in the report. Nothing to worry. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister?
Nothing to worry. Go ahead.
Any comments or questions in that update? Councillor Perry, close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes and paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion is carried. Any others? Item 6.6 is the community services report for September and October. Do I have any of that place?
So moved.
Councillor Jarman, thank you. Second.
Second.
Councillor Murphy, councillor Jarman.
Wow, it's going to be busy. Obviously, it's that time of the year. Our community services staff are going to be kept on their toes for the whole time. I'd just like to point out to the people out there about the community breakfast for the volunteers. They all do this really well and this time they've just moved the venue, that's all. This time it's going to be Market Square instead of Down at Bluff. And I hope there's lots of volunteers out there, the people that are the backbone of the area, can come along to that breakfast. I think it'll be really important, Monday, 6th of December at 7 o'clock. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of my lovely fellow colleagues there to help. The Santa Run's going to be for Christmas in the East and the Santa Tour. Instead of having a Christmas parade, I know everyone out there is very upset that because of COVID regulations, it's still a vibe that we have to abide by. But I hope people get out there and really relish this. It happened last year and it was just beautiful. So I hope that it can just grow and people can really embrace that it's a different way of doing it and celebrating Christmas, that's all. And it's a really lovely event. And rotary that do the Santa Tour are just great. They get out these beautiful cars and it's just wonderful. And then, of course, we actually are getting New Year's Eve fireworks. So congratulations to everyone involved in getting that up on board. It was done in very quick method. getting that up on board. It was done in very quick method, and I'm really, really proud of council and all the staff that have been involved in doing that, let alone good old Chaz Kelly that's put his hand up. So, you know, I think people have just got to understand how hard the staff work and what they put behind the scenes. People just don't realise. And there are a lot of wonderful events that run by council, and I think I really take the hat off to them and how hard they work. So I think people just don't appreciate it enough. Thank you.
Thank you. I might just endorse the invitation to volunteers to have breakfast. But I would ask that they register.
Absolutely.
Ask them, I was to my address. Please, please, not if you're coming. Councillor Lurkey, second one.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's also worth noting such a fantastic rollout or roll-up for the 50-plus-year ratepayer lunch. It was more important, very good event.
Do you have any other comments, questions?
Thanks, Mayor. I too was going to mention the RSVP to the breakfast because I think we'll have probably more volunteers this year. I know a lot of people that I've been speaking to. And of course, the highlight of that is that their elected members will be cooking for them. So, I mean, why wouldn't they come along? We'll put on our apron and do what we can. I'd also like to remind everybody that the Australia Award nominations are open, and it's time to nominate those people that sort of fly under the radar all year for the positions of Citizen of the Year, Young Citizen, and the community events. So there's lots of great things happening, and we are moving forward with all that in the community. It was lovely to see that photo in there of the ratepayer luncheon, and I did manage to attend that, and it was a lovely feeling in the room that we were looking after our ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah.
Councillor Perry?
Yeah, I just want to concur with all the previous speakers and just say what a magnificent team our community services team is. Must be the best community services team for a council in Tasmania. The amount of activities they take on, engage, and just pull that many people into the events that council runs and deliver them at a very high level consistently is a credit to Karen and the team. And we'll see that over the coming months as we get into the summer, have our events leading up to Christmas and shortly up to Christmas, how good they really are. But not that we need to mind. So congratulations to our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor John to close. Thank you.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. Motion all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried. Item 6.7 is the report for the community arts, our team, was it in October? Do I have any?
So moved.
Second.
Councillor John and Councillor Lachlan.
I've been on this, the art gallery committee for 10 years, and now I'm no longer going to be on the committee. What I've seen happen over the last 10 years from where to go has been amazing. And we've got a wonderful person, Geoffrey Dobson, in charge of what goes on in that cultural precinct that we have now all together, and it goes so well. And I just, I want to say, after 10 years, I can be just so relaxed in how well it's going to go forward. There's been a lot of people on that committee over those 10 years who've put a lot of blood, sweat and tears, almost, passion, enthusiasm, and look where it is now. We've got the most magnificent art gallery. I'm really proud of it, and can't wait to see that there'll be a black box theatre one day. We never know, looking at the General Manager. But I really, really love the precinct. I love how it works. It flows. Very clever to change the way that the entry is so that it's all spilling out onto Market Square. The whole area is starting to really work, and I really love that design. And I hope that it goes well into the future and grows as well. Notice that with the actual Arts Performing Centre, that they've had to really rearrange and reschedule because of COVID so many times. And my hat goes off again to the staff about how they've rescheduled things, made it happen, still looked after the artists, and done just a really great job. So well done to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lurkey?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I say that every month now, tick another box, Devonport's leading the way in providing that cultural hub for the region. But more importantly, you need to have a look at the fact that Mr. Dobson's portfolio also encases the Paranormal Arts Centre upstairs, the convention centre. And it's quite interesting, when we look at the line graphs, how much more activity we're seeing in that particular space. And I think that's really a positive sign. And I think as it grows and develops, and we get a hotel online, get more bits and pieces, I think we're going to see some pretty good things come out of upstairs.
Thank you. Any other comments, Councillor Lurkey?
Thanks, Mayor. Although I agree, the previous two speakers and ended owed to Geoff and his team, what I said about our community services team. But I can't imagine how difficult it's been in the last, over the last few years with COVID dislocation, particularly the arts community and the music industry. It's just been, yes, almost impossible, you know, shows being cancelled at the last minute, we're scheduling in life. So to come up with those sort of numbers in that environment, it's been a really good effort by Geoff and the team, and I'll may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor John to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. Motion all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried. Item 6.8 is the General Management's debt and finance and quality services report for September and October. Do I have any other comments?
So moved. Thank you, Mayor, for a detailed report. That's been normal. That's a few people in, a few people out. But other than that, we're tracking along okay.
Thank you, Councillor Lurkey.
Thank you. It's great to see that we are ahead in a lot of areas for this time of year too. So I'm going to choose people split up and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Other any other comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm missing it too, maybe. Councillor Lurkey to close.
Consider it closed.
I'll put motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried. Item 7 is section 23, please. Item 7.1 is the Quotient Canada Board demanding of the second of November. Do I have any other comments?
So moved.
One second.
Councillor Lurkey?
So moved.
One second.
Me, you say you.
So we're not in there.
Any comments, questions? Councillor Lurkey to close.
Zero five.
I'll put motion. All eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried. Item 7 brings us to, um, motion to move into process.
So moved.
Councillor Lurkey?
Second.
Councillor Lachlan to close.
No, Mayor.
Councillor Lachlan?
Nothing to add?
Motion all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion is carried unanimously. That brings us to the close of this section today. Ready for this one? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.